You asked me to do number three?
Yes.
That's a move to delay until...
Yes.
Welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting of December 4th, 2015. Let us rise for the pledge allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with LB 898, hang on a second. In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for future agendas. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Yes, just a reminder to the public, due to Christmas and New Year's Day holidays, city council will not meet on Monday, December 25th, or Monday, January 1st. We do request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through 12.
Would anyone like to speak on any of these items? Very well, next item.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Items one and two were introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion, please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item number three, we've had a request to continue public hearing in action to December 11th. This was introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
A move that we delay this item for continued public hearing in action to December 11th.
Second.
Moved by Larian, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then item four was introduced by Shob as well.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion, please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, items eight and nine were introduced by Camp.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion, please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. I'll call items 13 and 14 together. They are the application of HCJ LLC, doing business as Single Barrel Bourbon Street for a Class CK liquor license and a Class E Entertainment District liquor license at 300 Canopy Street, Suite 160, and the related manager application of Heath McComber.
Hi Heath. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Heath McComber, 122 North 11th Street, number 402 Lincoln, 68508.
All right, please tell us about your application.
Basically, it's just kind of an expansion on the brand that we currently have at the Single Barrel current location. It's a small space, it's the back half of Jack and June, underneath the cube space in the real yard, if you're familiar with that. It's about a 1,700 square foot space. Daily operations, we're going to serve lunch and dinner in a limited capacity just because of this kitchen space is very small there. But we do have some good ideas for what we're hoping to do in the spring and summer months, doing more communal type food, shrimp boils, crab boils, crawfish boils, taking advantage of the real yard entertainment district.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next are items 15 and 16. They're the application of Gear Hospitality LLC, doing business as Alchemy, for a Class C liquor license at 801 P Street, Suite 150, and the related manager application of Greg Nelson.
Hi Greg, just raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Greg Nelson, 3312 South 42nd Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68506.
Okay, please tell us about your application.
We've taken over the space that was formerly known as Doc's Place in the Apothecary Building in the Haymarket. Approximately 2,700 square feet total, a little over 1,700 square feet as a bar area. We've installed a commercial kitchen and applied for a sidewalk cafe permit and tending to continue operation as a bar, much in the same vein as it's been since, well, at least 1999 and possibly before, I'm not sure about the history on the building.
Okay, are you currently operating or...
Yes, we are, under a temporary operating permit.
Okay. Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
All right, next are items 17 and 18. They're the application of BH Operator LLC, doing business as Cloverleaf Suites Lincoln for a Class I liquor license at 200 South 68th Street Place, and the related manager application of Mary Beth Smith.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Mary Beth Smith, 5726 Brendan Lane, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68516.
Okay, please tell us about your application.
We're actually in the former, or the location that was Residence Inn and then the Chase Suite Hotel, we're now the Cloverleaf Suites. The hotel has been there since 1984. Our owners just took over the location the 1st of August. So it's a 120-room hotel, and we actually have complimentary beverages that we give to our registered guests. So really, it's, we have not been doing business since the new owners took over in August, but we'd like to continue what the prior hotels had done before.
Okay, other questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I would like to suggest or move that we approve items 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18.
Can we divide those out? And I want to explain what's going on here. John owns the building in which...
14 and 15.
For 14 and 15 apply, or 15 and 16 apply? And so, we need to separate those items out so he can be recused.
All right. So I'll move 13 and 14, 17, and 18, how about that?
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Benny. Discussion, please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Then I would move items number 15 and 16.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Benny. Discussion, please call the roll.
Camp?
I'm recusing myself on these two.
Okay. Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions. Item 19, provide citing approval to allow city-owned property to be used for future solid waste operations and to allow the permitting and operations of solid waste disposal areas and solid waste processing facilities on a parcel of ground containing approximately 710 acres in the vicinity of Highway 77 and the Bluff Road.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Donna Garden, I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities, and I'm here today to provide information on the resolution before you, seeking your approval of the site of our next landfill or processing facility. Let's first go back and take a look at what we have out there, and I want to provide some information here just for the public record on what we're doing here today. The background on Bluff Road landfill, this landfill was opened in 1988. It's a subtitle municipal solid waste landfill, and it's owned and operated by the City of Lincoln. And during that process, around that time, the folks that were up there actually did this opening of this landfill, decided to purchase land right next to it, just to the east. And as you can see on this picture that I have here on my slide, you see the landfill on the left side of the picture that's currently in operation, that's Bluff Road landfill, and the land to the east which is, looks like farmland, which it is right now, which is the site we're discussing today. Our current operations at Bluff Road landfill, we do have a landfill for municipal solid waste, we have a composting facility for yard waste, and we have a gas collection system. And of course, the landfill is permitted, and it has a leachate liner, leachate collection system, leachate is processed at our wastewater treatment facilities. And solid waste management plan was put together for the, out to 2040. And that group had a number of public hearings and discussions on what we should be doing in terms of preparing for the future. And part of that was to figure out what we're going to do with our disposal and processing capacity. Between now and 2040, we recognize that our disposal capacity would be exhausted. The last financial statement, we do this every year, in fact, we're preparing a new one for the 2017 year, but 2016, that financial statement stated that we had 16 years of life left with the current landfill. That doesn't include the eastern portion of land that we purchased. So, we're seeking the citing approval, and the citing approval comes prior to permitting this facility. Now, this sounds kind of early in the process because we think we've got 16 years left, but I'll explain that in a little bit. But what I do want to make note here is this is a diagram that shows the whole entire area that we would like to have your approval for citing a solid waste disposal facility or a solid waste processing facility. Right now, you can see that again, it's open farmland, we do have our composting processing facility on the northern part of that. That currently is not officially permitted until we decide to use it for other things like food materials and things like that, it's just for yard waste right now.
Donna, would you mind pointing on the map where we can see what you're referring to, where different things are located?
Okay, I'm not sure if I can do this.
Doesn't...
I don't think that's...
Looks like your cursor did work on the screen, your mouse did work.
The mouse did work, okay. All right, let's try that.
Yep.
This area over here that's circled with the blue line is our current Bluff Road landfill where we're filling today. And the part that's permitted today is actually identified in this red line area here. We're looking at now citing the next area, which is land that is owned by the City of Lincoln right now, currently, for future use as a solid waste disposal area or a solid waste processing facility. We don't need a permit right now for this composting area because it's just composting yard waste. If we take other materials in it, we'd require a permit for that. But a composting facility is considered a solid waste processing facility. And in terms of citing approval, we would have the entire area, this whole square, 710 acres, cited for this use, and then the permitting activity would actually take care of what activities are occurring in there. So again, the question of why are we doing this now? It's 16 years ahead of time, we just, in terms of why and how we want to do that, we want to have the assurance that we have a place to handle the capacity and infrastructure and meet the needs of Lincoln and Lancaster County in the future. And we've seen some remarkable circumstances across the state and also in other places where if this did not pass citing approval today and we had to look for a new portion of land to put a landfill in, that citing process could take 15 years, and we've seen that happen elsewhere. So this just makes assurance that we have the capacity for the future. We also are planning to do a new application for a permit, which will include the entire site, but it won't have the actual activity included in it for the eastern half because we're not planning to open that site for a number of years. And the fact that we had public involvement in this, both when we purchased it many, many years ago, as well as during the solid waste management plan development, that this was the best way to move forward. So NDQ requires local citing approval prior to permitting for both of these, disposal areas and processing facilities, and that citing approval is required by state statute, that's 13-2035. The citing approval criteria according to that statute says that the proposed site that it is necessary for, needs to be a landfill, it's designed and located and operated to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, it's compatible with the character of the surrounding area and will have no significant effect on property value, operating plan will minimize danger from fires, spills, and other operational accidents, and it's designed to minimize impacts on existing traffic flow. And since this is adjacent to the current landfill that we have now, it basically applies to both sides. And I guess one other thing, I do want to add, all of the neighbors within 1,000 feet of that area were notified more than two weeks ago in terms of being able to attend this public hearing and add any comments, provide us with any comments that they might have. And as of now, I don't believe we've received any. So this grant, we went to grant citing approval for the selected site for the landfill expansion to include two things I mentioned, solid waste disposal areas and/or a solid waste processing facility. And the definition that's in NDQ's Title 132 in state statute says that a solid waste disposal area can consist of municipal solid waste disposal, construction and demolition waste, industrial waste, delisted hazardous waste, fossil fuel combustion ash, land application units, that's the treatment of special waste, and then it has a but not limited to these things. And that would mean we would have to do special permission from NDQ that would require a public hearing in order to move forward with any other type of waste other than what's listed here. Same thing also applies to a solid waste processing facility. The definition officially includes compost sites, material recovery facilities, recycling centers, transfer station, but it also has the but not limited to language as well. And again, we'd have to go before NDQ and have a public hearing associated with permitting anything other than these particular things. So our next steps are, if we have citing approval and you pass this resolution today, we will be applying for an NDQ permit. It will include the Bluff Road landfill active area, and it will also include the citing approval associated with the area right adjacent to it. And NDQ will have a public notice, and there is a hearing process associated with that. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Donna? Thank you very much. John, oh, sorry.
Yes, Ms. Garden, thank you very much. You said 2026 you would start on it, is that correct? Or you wanted in service 2026?
I didn't, no, I said we had 16 years left of capacity with our...
Excuse me.
2016, as of 2016, we had 16 years left of our capacity.
Okay, that's what I heard, okay. And then, so we're still going to be working on that north portion above the existing? Just keep expanding there as the need arises?
We will be continuing to use the western portion until it's full, we have those 16 years left. We may borrow some soils from the eastern portion, things like that for daily cover, but we won't be opening that landfill for a number of years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Next is item 20, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of November 1st through the 15th, 2017.
Is there anyone here who would like to testify on a claim? Please come forward now. Are you coming forward, ma'am? Okay, very good. Next item, please.
All right, then, next is item 21, a resolution approving the issuance of not to exceed $40,985,000 principal amount of correctional facility refunding bonds, Series 2017, to be issued by Lancaster County Correctional Facility Joint Public Agency.
Good afternoon, Scott Keen with Emeritus Investment Corp.
And I'm Todd Wilkson, I'm with the county board, and I chair the Lancaster County Correctional, adult correctional JPA.
The resolution before you today is the final step in an authorization to allow for the refunding of the JPA's Series 2009 bonds that are recallable this coming December, a year from just Friday. And we are here because interest rates have fallen dramatically enough that there are significant savings to the JPA if we refund the bonds now. They currently have an outstanding average interest rate of approximately 4.89%, and we conservatively estimate that today, in today's rates, the bonds could be sold with a rate of about 2.5%. So a significant difference in the interest rates that would result in at least $440,000 per year of savings. The final maturity of the bonds is not being extended, we're staying with the original amortization of 2028, and with your approval today, hope to actually be in the market this coming Wednesday. On the 21st of November, we received the approval from the county board. On the 28th of November, we received the approval from the JPA board. So city council approval of this resolution is our final step, and we've held calls with the rating agencies, both Moody's and Standard and Poor's have affirmed the AAA ratings for the JPA, so we are in good shape to proceed with the financing this Wednesday. Todd, is there anything that you want to add?
Just wanted to point out, and it's something that I've talked to a couple of members of the council, the way that this was originally set up, this JPA, the county actually committed $2 million to the financing for the new jail, and then the remainder would be made up by the city, their authority to bond, or to issue bonds. And so, as a result, the savings that you're going to be approving would be, basically the city residents would receive that benefit, the county would still be responsible for the 2 million, but the savings would be realized by the city taxpayers.
City taxpayers have two lines on their tax statements, the city share of the JPA debt and the county share of the JPA debt, and because of a quirk in the statute, all of these savings will accrue to that line, city share of the JPA debt. So folks, public taxpayers outside of the city limits will not benefit from this, but clearly everyone living within the city of Lincoln will.
Okay, any questions?
Point of reference, you've got those two lines on the tax bills, so the county residents, so outside the city, don't have the city portion of...
That's exactly right. That's a good point, Mr. Camp. The county folks are only responsible for the county share, city residents are responsible for both. So from that perspective, as Todd has said in other meetings, from a fairness perspective, this seems appropriate as well.
We appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next, we'll go on to our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item 22, ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed $14 million aggregate stated principal amount of water refunding bonds of the City of Lincoln, Nebraska. I will note for the record that we do have a request to withdraw this item, but if anybody is here to testify, they can.
Would anyone like to testify on this? Okay.
And Teresa, I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw this.
Okay. Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Cindy. Discussion, please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is item 23, approving a lease agreement between the city and Extonet Systems, Inc., for the purpose of installing small cell wireless technology on city-owned street light poles.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Well, let's try that again.
Some of us have had a longer day than others.
Mr. Chairman, David Young, Public Works, and today we're talking about the third agreement for small cell equipment and next generation wireless infrastructure in Lincoln. I have provided a picture as a reminder. These agreements are exactly the same except for one clause, which I will go into here in just a second. We'll see if the equipment comes up.
Just remember, technology will always betray you.
Yes, it will.
There you go.
As you'll remember, this pole was designed by Valmont out of Valley, Nebraska, and replaces any one of the standard poles we have around the city. In a sensitive location, we have the right to additional reviews and requesting different poles. But this is the standard which will replace 95% of the streetlights in Lincoln, we'd be available for that.
Okay, questions?
The specific clause that is different in this agreement is paragraph, under paragraph 15, subsection 3. Extonet is a little bit different of a company, and Tim Asta will come up from Extonet and speak about that. Paragraph 15, subsection A, what we allow is that the equipment inside of the shroud, so behind that banner or in the antenna, be owned by a third party, as long as it meets our standard. So the agreement is actually with Extonet, Extonet may sub-license the actual equipment that's inside of that shroud. That is the only difference, which we feel like allows Extonet the flexibility to bring different technology, different providers to Lincoln than our other partners would.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Timothy Asta, I represent Extonet Systems. Our corporate address is 3030 Warrenville Road, Lisle, Illinois, that's spelled L-I-S-L-E. I'd like to thank you all today for your time and for the opportunity for Extonet to invest in the essential infrastructure here in Lincoln, Nebraska. Extonet is a telecommunications utility. We own the infrastructure, so I don't sell phones like Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, or T-Mobile. They are my customers, and we have other customers as well, but primarily, we will build the facilities for those companies to use, and we use the term small cell, you'll hear the term DAS, CRAN. Essentially, it's a small antenna, small equipment used on utility poles and streetlights, primarily to improve capacity and in some instances, coverage for the mobile user. So as David alluded to, we are grateful to be here, we will be accepting the same terms, and I would like to thank city staff for the reasonable approach. I work nationwide, I think Lincoln has some terrific staff that's facilitating this, and very excited to be here. We have a committed tenant that will be hopefully signing the contract now that I can go back and say that we have a streetlight license, so I'm very excited for that, and most of that's here in the downtown, and we think within the next three to four years, we're probably looking at about 100 sites or more, and my Phase 1 has about 33 sites currently that we're looking at, almost all city-owned streetlights, there's a couple of wooden poles as well. But I think you all know what the technology looks like, I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise, thank you very much.
Are there questions for Mr. Asta? Jane?
How many sub-licenses can you have on one individual pole? Because you have multiple communication clients, correct?
That's a very good question. Because Extonet is a neutral host, we can actually accommodate multiple users on the same pole. The trade-off is if a Verizon Wireless and an AT&amp;T were on the same pole, you would theoretically have a larger equipment cabinet on the pole. Each of those carriers have their own frequency that they purchase from the federal government, and because of that, they have different equipment that they use for their customers. But we have a number of networks in the northeast, especially in Boston, New York. We actually have three and four carriers on the same pole, operating out of the same antenna. So the trade-off, as I mentioned, the equipment can get a little bit larger, or as we've done in some places, we actually take the equipment off the pole. We install a, a ground-based installation that can be locked and unlocked, and then each carrier has their own proprietary gear inside of that, and then they're just facilitating out of the same antenna. So we would like to have multiple users in there, but it doesn't always work. Because they have very small service areas, they may need to be on the same block, but maybe not the exact same pole, but we're hoping so.
Thank you.
John? Yes, regarding the ground equipment and so forth, regardless of what's put up on top of the light pole, do they all require a ground?
No. It, it depends upon the municipality. In this case, we would be putting the equipment on the pole, because the Valmont replacement pole has been designed to accommodate the additional wind and ice loading of that equipment. So from a safety perspective, we can do that here. In the Kansas City region, by comparison, most everything is actually in a ground cabinet. That's just the way those communities wanted it there. So I don't need to add anything to the ground, but we could.
Okay. So you could still accommodate three or four on a single light pole if you had to?
Theoretically, if we could squeeze the equipment into a small enough space, but we always have to make sure that pole structurally kind of accommodated. So more often than not, I'll err on the conservative side and say usually one carrier per mid-block streetlight pole, for example. But then oftentimes, if we were to go to an intersection and use a traffic pole, oftentimes those poles are structurally more accommodating. They have the masked arms, and in many instances, we've been able to put multiple carriers on the intersection sites.
On those traffic poles, would we have to replace those, or we can use what we have existing?
We always have to look at that individual pole and now analyze the structure and the foundation and any additional features the city wants to add. I usually say that replacement poles come in, however, we can usually co-locate on the traffic poles, because they've been designed to handle lots of weight.
What are we talking about, the individual cost of a regular pole for one or two carriers versus a traffic light pole?
To replace those poles, anywhere, you know, when you're talking about a mid-block metal pole, twenty thousand dollars to replace an intersection pole that has interrelated traffic equipment, you could double and triple that pretty easily.
This agreement specifically envisions streetlight poles. It does not include traffic poles. We will entertain that as part of a discussion with our traffic department and look at specifically for Extonet's technology. There are no rights granted to Extonet under this agreement for a traffic pole.
That's actually very common. I'm glad that David mentioned that, because most cities say, at least initially, while they're getting their arms around the technology, stay off the traffic poles. We've had a number of cities prefer them, Chicago, Indianapolis, and others. But again, we can work, we can work of whatever the arrangement is.
Hey, Lyrian?
David, when these arrangements with the new pole design locally in Nebraska came forward with the Verizon contract, there's a lot of time spent on what it would mean to have taller poles downtown and aesthetics and functionality and protecting right-of-way for pedestrians and cyclists, et cetera. The idea of a box, ground box, sitting next to this new-designed pole is something we never really talked about. How does that, how do you reconcile that with some of the competing goals of making sure we have walkable streets downtown, that there aren't, you know, more block, things blocking the vision of cars and motors to returning on city streets?
So under this agreement specifically, ground-mounted equipment is not included. Ground-mounted equipment comes under our right-of-way occupancy ordinance, and we have all the latitude there of where we place equipment and where we don't place equipment. But from a technology perspective, it is better for the carrier to actually mount the equipment to the pole. So the fiber runs up to the boxes that are on the side of the pole, and then from there, they use a copper-based coax cable to connect the antennas. And that's how they convert microwave signals to light, or those boxes on the side. A carrier prefers to put it on the pole, for that reason. Putting it on the ground, there are some instances where Extonet could apply to us to do that. Generally, we don't expect to see very much of that, and we would have all of the latitude beyond that.
Are you concerned that, that multiple providers could be placed on the pole?
I think the technology really is going to lend itself to that long-term, but we're years away from that. Specifically, under our in-power application with UNL, we're wanting to research that. Next-generation antennas that will listen to sending and receiving on multiple frequencies at once. Right now, each one of the antennas is dedicated to a single frequency, which is why most carriers choose one carrier per pole, per location.
Hey, John?
I'd like to talk about the financial parts of this, because it is a lease. Is that correct?
It is a license agreement. I don't actually have the document in front of me. I have a summary.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at, at the master lease agreement, and, but let's see. I want to understand the relationships here and the potential liability to the city. I guess, and maybe David, you're the one to go through that, but just understanding, because there's this nineteen hundred and ninety-five dollars per year rental rate for pole, and could you talk about where the monies come from, where they go, what the licensing income is, what happens if, say, there's new technology and these are all abandoned? Is there a liability in the city since it's now got these poles that replace existing poles?
Sure, I'm happy to discuss that. I think what we did here in Lincoln has been looked at by many other cities. So the agreement itself is for twenty years, and it covers, is for twenty years.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. The agreement itself is for twenty years. Each site that Extonet chooses after that, they have a supplemental agreement that approves a single site. That supplemental agreement is good for five years minimum, and it can be renewed multiple times. So specifically, when technology changes, every five years, Extonet has the opportunity to remove their equipment from that pole if they choose, or to move from one pole location to another, depending on the frequencies that they're licensed to provide. At the end of twenty years, all supplemental agreements terminate, and so we would renegotiate at that point. The equipment is all the responsibility of the vendor, Extonet, in this scenario. We have no responsibility for the equipment whatsoever. The poles are new poles that are installed, and we retain ownership of the poles. The scenario is a pole gets knocked down. It does happen. A car drives into a pole. At that point, Extonet would provide us with a replacement pole. We would jointly bill whoever knocked down the pole. LES would do the work as part of the maintenance agreement that we have with them under our existing license, or our existing maintenance agreement with LES.
Well, you were talking, though, about a lot of these in the downtown area as being a potential first step in that, and so we're charging nineteen hundred and ninety-five dollars a year per pole, as I understand it here, rent. If a pole's costing twenty, forty, maybe sixty thousand dollars, let's say forty thousand in the middle, we go twenty years, and we have installation costs, you know, labor and so forth. I'm confused here. If you could explain the dynamics on where the city's on the hook versus safeguards that it has so we can protect our taxpayers.
A standard streetlight pole costs about twenty-four hundred dollars. This pole costs about thirty-six hundred dollars. So it's about a thousand dollars more, and that's for the strengthening members inside the pole. It's identical to the poles we have, other than the extra support structure to hold up the weight. The liability we have is just to maintain the pole. And in there, we have all kinds of conditions under section, I had to get down to it, the maintenance section, where Extonet or any of the leases agree to work with us on the maintenance under subsection twenty-seven, under structural reconditioning, repair, and replacement, where during this time, if we need to request it, they can, they will remove their equipment at our request to do maintenance on the pole. Life expectancy on these poles is thirty years, and the agreement is for twenty. At the renewal point in time, then we would look at, what do we do as far as maintenance agreements on that?
To be, to be clear, who buys the pole?
Extonet.
Right. They're buying the pole to begin with. And paying a lease to use the pole for the equipment you're installing on it.
There's an application fee, and then also we pay, which is very standard across the board. And when I gave you that figure, I'm also contemplating if I have to upgrade the foundation, which we almost always have to. There's, there's a lot of site prep work in the engineering.
So the city, from its standpoint, is really held harmless from
Correct.
financial costs. It's rather, and then it'll enjoy the nineteen ninety-five a year with a two-point-three percent escalation
Correct.
for rental of that. We do maintain the pole. I suppose, like you said, if the car hits it or something, vehicle hits it. So if that happens, I guess you're saying we hopefully will collect against somebody's insurance. If not, does that fall back to the city, or?
It most likely does, and we have, I think, ten of these poles that are being stocked at LES. We work with LES very closely on the maintenance of this infrastructure. So where we have identified a pole and a leasie has selected that site for location, we have ten of these streetlight-rated poles that have been provided to LES. So if that pole particularly gets knocked down, they take a new pole that is small-cell designed, stick it in its place, Extonet comes and retrieves all their equipment and reinstalls it.
I know I can hold a cellphone, but is there any utility costs for the cellular equipment that the city would be paying in addition to the electricity, for example, for the lights?
We do not pay for the electricity for any of the lessors equipment. That's a, that's a separate circuit.
So you'll have your own meters for each?
Correct. We, we actually have to have twenty-four-seven uninterrupted power, which is essentially a separate power source, independent of the bank switch or however that light is functioning, so we are billed separately for our usage.
Does that involve tearing up streets or boring underground to get more conduit?
Yes.
Or how does that work? You're going to tear up streets?
Yes. Hopefully not tear up the street. We will tear up the sidewalk to put in three vaults, one for communications, one for fiber, and one for power, or one for separate communications for carrier, one for power.
And that'll be paid for by?
All of the construction is paid for by Extonet. The concept here is the public owns the streetlight as it exists right now, and Extonet would like to upgrade that location to where it will carry the weight of their equipment. So that's why the new pole is required. Otherwise, we would be guaranteeing the pole for something it wasn't designed for.
And then my last question is, it sounds like through your experience that you really like to keep just one carrier on a pole, and so you would then hopefully market another nearby pole that would satisfy that other telecommunications entity?
Correct. It, it seems that what's happening now, most carriers, because they have specific equipment needs, one carrier per pole. So we would either look at the next pole or down the block, but our experience so far is if Verizon's in a certain area, AT&amp;T's probably nearby, but not right over the top of them, you know, they all have existing networks. All we're doing is augmenting those networks. But we do anticipate putting additional carriers and making sure that all of your citizens and visitors and business owners have that essential communication, whether they're Sprint customers, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Verizon.
Hey, any other questions?
Penny? Thank you, Mr. June. And following up on Mr. Camp's question, Commissioner Camp, I heard you say earlier, fiber, then copper, to microwave, and I'm a little confused about the technology. Is it going to be mostly hardwired in, or will there be a microwave transmitter sending signals to the top of the poles?
There is no microwave in this specific instance. The antenna itself is a, a line of sight communication.
Okay.
But the antenna itself would be the only transmitting device that's actually on the pole. I know that one of our competitors does have a microwave dish. They actually need to go much taller. We're not proposing that. We're actually proposing right around your thirty-five-foot-tall poles, antenna sitting on the top. That antenna is connected with fiber cable, and that fiber is then where it transmits back to the larger switch, to Verizon's network or Sprint's master network. So that's how the interconnect works.
Thank you.
Lyrian?
David, this question for you in Public Works. Will you be coordinating with other divisions of Public Works when it comes to opening up the sidewalks, such that if there is other work needed in the area, other infrastructure work underground, that it could be coordinated at the same time, rather than potentially coming back a year later and tearing up the same sidewalk? Is there an opportunity to have that review and coordination?
There is, and we do coordinate. We have Tuesday morning coordination meetings for all construction as it's happening across the city, and all of our private utility construction is coordinated with our capital construction and monthly meetings. Yes, we do try to coordinate, but it's, it's challenging to coordinate the needs of Extonet, Verizon, mobility, plus the fiber carriers, and their business-driven needs with our capital improvement projects. We do try, though, yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Cindy?
Thank you, Mr. Asta. Thanks for being here today. And I just want to clarify something, because I heard that you look at each pole to determine the structural needs and so forth, but I'm also hearing that maybe you may have to replace every single pole because of the technology. Am I hearing that wrong, or you anticipate every time you attach your technology to these poles initially that we're going to have a replacement pole?
The replacement pole will be designed, and this is through Valmont, the organization that works and sells poles nationwide. They have designed those poles for safety and the future growth in mind, and they may even be designed with holiday banners on them. So once that pole's replaced, it will not need to be replaced, replaced again as we add any more equipment. But any pole that we would go on, I anticipate we replace it, yes. Not only from the perspective of structurally, but a lot of poles don't actually have space up the middle for the additional cabling, and just from a eyesight perspective, it's better to hide the cable up the middle of the pole.
So our current streetlights, we can expect those poles are going to be replaced when the technology's attached?
I would anticipate that that is the case. A lot of the poles that I have witnessed are an aggregate pole. Those poles are usually a little more, little more brittle. They weren't designed for any additional wind and ice shear on them, so they will be replaced with metal.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Asta, for being here and for your company's investment in our community.
Thank you for the opportunity to work in Lincoln. Thank you so much.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next, I will call items twenty-four through forty-six together, as they are all various amendments to the Lincoln Municipal Code.
Well, thank you for not reading all of them, too.
We will go through all of them.
We will.
Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney. I have with me our Chief Prosecutor, Jessica Kirkoff, today. What I had envisioned is going through each of them one by one. If you have questions, you can ask, either whilst we go through them or at the end. This is part of an annual project we make under the direction of an administrative regulation, where once a year, we try to go through, work with the departments, and make cleanup changes, technical amendments. One of the things we look at is, we don't intend to bring you anything as part of this package that would be controversial at all, but just things, and you'll see as we go through them, that are either technical or cleanup or harmonizing with state statute or other city code. So that's kind of the overall goal of this package, and I'll let Jessica start with the first one.
The first ordinance proposed change involves moving, an item that was in Title X, the traffic section, and moving it into the criminal code section, specifically that section that allows or gives police officers guidance in when to detain a person further than they already have during the course of a contact with a, with a party that they're citing. In looking at it, as it relates to one of the other ordinance changes that we're proposing, it made sense to move it from traffic to criminal, as it, it's in the criminal code and the statutes. And it, when we're talking about contacting people on criminal matters versus traffic matters, you're talking about more issues of detention and, and their custody. So that was just a, a matter of switching it to a, a section that it made more sense in.
The next item, seventeen one sixty-three.
Do you want to have individual questions or wait till it's?
I think you can ask them as we go through them. It'd be great.
On, on this particular one, I'm curious if the police officer's going to make an arrest anyway, and so whether or not someone signs, they're still going to be arrested, am I understanding that correctly, or what's the difference here?
Well, I mean, the language isn't terribly different than what we already have in Title X, so the grounds for an officer to continue or to decide to detain someone further, not signing, not giving their name, things like that, they, they already exist. We're just moving them to a section that makes more sense in, so maybe I don't understand your question.
The person's going to be arrested regardless and sent to jail?
Potentially, and/or detained further so the officer can get that information that they need, so they can sign and release them.
This is a cleanup. There's no, is there any real change in what's going to happen on the street, other than we've cleaned up the language?
Right. The language is essentially the same as what already exists and/or mirrors what's in the state statute, and it's just being moved to a, a new section. So there's no new language in here, no new, nothing added for a police officer to, to consider.
Okay. Cindy?
Thanks. So this one, as I read through it, what, one of the things that sparked my interest is that there were a number of reasons that the, that a person could be detained further by a police officer, failing to identify themselves properly. One of the reasons was that the person has previously failed to appear in response to a citation, and I'm curious how you would know that if you have, don't have And I'm curious how you would know that if you don't have sufficient identification by the person? How an officer would know that if the person hasn't sufficiently identified themselves?
Well, it's an or, so I think it's any one of those things an officer can consider in detaining someone further. So they're gonna detain someone in trying to identify who they are. And then, once they get the identification and they're running their record and they can see that they have a history failing to appear, that might be something that the officer takes then to a sergeant. I think we should lodge this person or, you know, need to take them in.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, go on.
Seventeen one sixty-three, this has to do with the examining board of the plumbers. You might recall about a month ago, I think it was now, we came to you with some updates for the plumbing code, the electrical code, a number of the codes. This is one of the things we should have updated then and didn't. What it does is it places the examination for folks. It used to be in the gas fitters code. This would place them under the examining authority of the plumbers board. So it's a matter of the cleanup that came with those codes. We missed it there. We're just kind of cleaning it up at this point. Next one?
Okay. This particular amendment deals with ordinances in Chapter nine point two four of our Theft and Property Offenses section. State law increased the amount, value of an item stolen in their classification of levels of offenses, which our level of offenses can be prosecuted at up to a five hundred dollar fine, up to six months in jail. That particular class of offense now has a maximum theft value of five hundred dollars under state law. So that was something that we wanted to increase our jurisdiction on in the amount of the theft value. We are adding consolidation of theft offenses. This is a statute that exists that basically allows us to, well, is what it says, kind of consolidate the facts. So whether somebody is, however the facts come out, whether it's theft of the shoplifting offense, or concealing, or changing a tag, or whatever it is, however those facts come out, it's a theft. And we're able to proceed on that as a theft. It does give the defendant an opportunity to continue or for the court to ensure the defendant has a fair trial. But ultimately, we can proceed on how the facts come out, depending on what particular behavior was the person was engaged in. We also are harmonizing our trespassing language to the state statute as well to reflect the language that's in the statute. So that's purely a harmonization.
Plus, we thought it was better than our old version.
It is. The next one is the repealing of ten six eighty, which is the language that we're moving to Title Nine on the detention of parties and how citations are issued. So that is what exists now that we would be taking away and then adding the refusal to sign a traffic citation, which has existed in state law for some time. The penalty is such that there's no reason for the city to not have the same type of violation tool for the officers, and really a tool for us, more as prosecutors, once we get into the courtroom and securing appearances and expediting cases through court and making sure we get people in.
Okay.
Questions on that? The registration ordinance package is cleaning up our language. Our language has been kind of clunky. It's probably not as streamlined as we'd like, but we think it's a good improvement. There are some new changes that we're adding, specifically the one license plate allowance under state law now, where a car that does not have a front bucket, a person can pay an extra hundred dollars to get a decal for their front windshield, so they only have to have one license plate on the back. So we'll be consistent with that. We also added a couple of things in our fictitious license plates and proof of ownership sections to, again, harmonize with state law on that. And then we combined some of the trailer language into the regular registration language just to make it a little clearer and more consolidated. The next one is in our traffic control legend in Title X twelve. We are adding, since Lincoln now has red arrows, steady red arrows, we wanted to add a definition for that. There was no definition under state law at the time that I was asked to look at this. I'm not sure if there is one now, actually. But I derived the definition of red arrow from the manual and uniform traffic control devices, looked at other cities, at how they had that defined and what circumstances they were using those types of arrows. And addressed that throughout, including those particular ordinances that talked about steady red circular arrows and making, or steady red circular lights, sorry, and making sure the red arrow was also mentioned in there as well.
Have we included language in there for these yellow flashing arrow?
Yellow flashing has a definition existing. Yellow flashing, circular and yellow flashing arrow, both already exist. We did make a slight change on the language of yellow flashing arrow. Upon the display of a flashing or intermittently lighted yellow arrow lighted by such signal, vehicular traffic facing it may proceed into the intersection only with caution, as opposed to through and past such signal. That seemed to make more sense to us to going through into the intersection. So, yes, we do have those already existing.
Thank you.
Ten fourteen one ninety. This is language right out of the statute and something that we have always, it's always been in the back of our minds as prosecutors as we're doing motions to suppress on DUIs and things like that, and wanting to have consistent language with the state law and that type of offense. So that's strictly just making it exactly the same. Let's see, ten fourteen four twenty. Oh, that's the school bus. We've been inconsistent on the school bus penalty for some time. This was an opportunity to correct that and harmonize it. Our ordinance had a penalty of up to five hundred dollar fine for passing a school bus with the arm extended. This harmonizes with state law to make it a flat five hundred dollar fine. Sixteen thirty. That, ten sixteen thirty, we're talking about our DUI ordinance. It was pointed out to us that our first offense penalty language was not consistent with the statute. So we went ahead and went in there and made that consistent specifically on the language of probation. That was, I heard it myself straight from a judge during a hearing. It just wasn't, it wasn't clear to him exactly what that, what the language meant as far as license revocation on a probation order under a city ordinance violation. So we went in there and cleaned that up and changed that to the state statute language. Our other, our two suspension and revocation ordinances, driving while your license is suspended and driving while your license is revoked, those are changes made, again, to strictly mirror updates in state law. The state statute took out the language of requiring movement upon a street alley or highway. And then, for both the suspension and the revocation laws, the revocation law also now allows for a sentence of probation at the court's discretion, which our ordinance did not have. So that was something that we wanted to make sure that we had in there.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you say that the elements have changed somewhat in that?
No. Well, the state law took out the requirement that it be on a city street, on a street, highway, or alley. So it's...
And so that's what you're proposing?
So that's what we're doing, yes, with the suspended license ordinance. And then with the revocation ordinance, we're also taking that out as it exists in state law and then adding the ability for a judge to put a party on probation, which we did not have before.
So what's the practical effect of that with regard to somebody without a suspended license in their driveway or on private property?
Driveway might be a little different than, say, a shopping mall, parking lot?
Generally applies to private property that's open to the public.
Right.
Okay.
Kind of the same as the DUI laws, open to public access areas.
Okay, so you're in a parking lot that's open to the public. The guy with a suspended license is waiting for someone in the store and gets into the driver's seat and turns on the radio.
I can't say that I've seen that report come across.
Does the statute apply? I mean, is there a violation?
Would this change?
It could. I mean, I think there have to be a few more questions that the officer would want to ask. But it's not operating the same as, well, probably don't have case law in the definition of operating as far as registration, or, I'm sorry, suspension and revocation go. But I would imagine the courts would follow the same type of analysis as they do on DUIs.
Thank you.
Ten thirty eighty. We are amending...
Drew, we know where you are.
I'm sorry.
I have thirty-four on our agenda?
I am on number thirty-five. I apologize. I'm pointing my ordinance number.
Four is essentially the same as thirty-three.
Right. I was, right. I'm sorry. I was talking about those in context of suspended license versus revoked license, which are two different things. So in number thirty-five, speaking about ordinance ten thirty eighty, that is soliciting from what is commonly called the right-of-way now. We are wanting to clarify that language, taking basically the sidewalk area out of that consideration and clarifying that people can't enter the street, basically, to solicit whatever it is that they're soliciting. And the last one, ten thirty-two seventy, to combine the length of a vehicle in a trailer to exceed twenty-one, I think twenty-one feet there to be in violation of zoning in the areas where that's prohibited.
So I have a question on that one. So they can't be parked on the street?
Right.
So what happens when somebody brings in their moving van as a semi truck? They can't park to load their household goods?
You know, I don't think that that's how it's enforced. I mean, I'd have to, you know, I'd have to hear that from... I'm sorry?
Because it's more than one twenty-one feet.
True. I think my understanding would be from the PSOs that deal with this type of issue. It's a complaint-based issue, and they're going out and having either trouble with people, you know, who are maybe over-the-road drivers and parking their semis in front of their house for days on end. I think that's really the enforcement issue that they're looking for.
Well, and you do have the right to two hours, without question. It's beyond that where, if you're slow, that you could run into an issue there. But I think it's, we try to enforce it in a common sense way rather than strictly. But the question before was, is a trailer part of the length? So that's what we're trying to address with this.
John?
Yeah, I have some concerns with that, if we don't put exceptions in there, because you could have a construction truck and a trailer with a cement mixer or something there for a day or so activity if they're doing, they have tools in there, you have lawn services that have trailers with all of their devices, their lawn mowers and so forth, that are going to be out there. And so I'm just wondering if maybe you ought to reconsider some things here, because I don't like the idea of having an ordinance in place that we say, well, we're just not gonna enforce it. If we're gonna have an ordinance, let's enforce it. I know we do a lot of enforcement on an exception or on a reported basis. And I see Director Cassidy may come forward, but maybe you can address that in a way that would satisfy me.
Well, and I think if you want to come back and have us look at this again, we're happy to. But if you do read the current ordinance where it talks about provisions of this section shall not apply to semi-trailers, trailers, trucks, or tractors being used in connection with construction, repair, service, or moving operations, that seems to me to be a fairly wide exception to that.
That remains.
That's, yeah, that's there. We're not touching that. The only thing we're doing, and this is why we think it fits within these cleanup provisions, is the question was, if you've got a trailer that's attached to a vehicle, do you add up the length of the two or not? And that's what we're trying to clarify with this. And that's the only thing we're really, I believe, trying to clarify with this.
Director Cassidy was gonna come say.
So when would this, so it's just the measurement's twenty-one feet. So when would this come into play? Because a moment ago, you're saying, well, we just...
You had a next-door neighbor that moved his truck and fifth wheel up on your street and left it parked there day after day.
I think that's the type of complaint that the PSOs are working on, generally speaking.
Well, as long as a good exception is there for contractors and that sort of thing, so that we're not penalizing you. Thank you.
The next ordinance, seventeen one seventy-six, addresses a change that took place within the city within the last year. The workforce development is a federal grant, which we had previously used and hired our own city employees to administer that grant and do the workforce development. This year, there was a process, a competitive process. We ended up hiring a private company to do the workforce training. And so we still have one employee that works for the city that administers the grant. The grant language talks about the CEO of the agency or subdivision, which in our case, of course, is a mayor. We thought it made more sense, since previously, these employees were employees of urban development. But now, we've got one employee that reports to the CEO to put this under the mayor's office rather than leave it in urban development, which was where it was at for years, where we had a number of employees carrying this out. Seventeen one seventy-seven, that has to do with our regulation of body art establishments. And this was a recommendation brought to us by the Health Department that instead of saying this is unlawful, which means basically we would treat it as a crime, it is declared a public nuisance. The Health Department felt, and they admitted that we haven't had problems with this in Lincoln, but if we do have problems, they thought they could close down an illegal establishment more quickly with it being a public nuisance rather than writing a citation, waiting for the arraignment, and so on. Seventeen one seventy-eight is, would make it legal to transport legal fireworks within the city of Lincoln without having to first have them inspected by the Police Department. This, I think, is an artifact from when we didn't have any legal fireworks in the city of Lincoln. And nobody ever bothered cleaning that up when we made it legal. Seventeen one seventy-nine applies to the Charter Revision Commission. Currently, the code says that they are required to meet a minimum of twice annually. Now, some time ago, that was interpreted by Dana Roper, then the city attorney to the Charter Revision Commission, as meet at least twice annually if you have proposals before you to consider. And so there was a period of time when they didn't meet. We have met several times this year, had a conversation with the Charter Revision Commission, shared with them Mr. Roper's interpretation. I would say that they felt less comfortable with that interpretation than the commission did back when he originally gave them that interpretation. So, but they did feel comfortable with making this change. So they're required to meet once annually, whether they have anything on their agenda or not. If they have things on their agenda, then like this year, they might meet a number of different times to discuss that and perhaps bring it before you, and with the idea of bringing it before the public. Seventeen one eighty is an ordinance that would harmonize the description of the Board of Directors or the Board of Trustees of the Lincoln Library Board, the bylaws, and the city code. We introduced that, then realized the Library Board had not taken a position on that yet. I felt it was appropriate for them to take a position on that before it came before you. And so that's why we're asking that that be pulled.
Can we deal with that right now?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I'd like to move that we withdraw this item seventeen dash one eighty regarding the Library Board's membership in the Lincoln Municipal Code.
Second?
Moved by Larry and seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Taylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Shou?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Seventeen one eighty-one, our technical amendments that go back to the Lincoln Mechanical and Lincoln Plumbing Code. As you recall, we updated that a short period of time ago. There were several references to other codes that were essentially typos. And so we're just coming back and cleaning up those references to other code sections. Seventeen one eighty-two is a reference to the citizen handicap parking patrol officer, which was a volunteer position to make sure that people were not abusing handicap parking spaces. This is a volunteer position that hasn't been used by the Lincoln Police Department for some period of time, and so we thought it was appropriate to take that out of our code.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So I realize it hasn't been used, and I understand the logic behind this, but having that provision in there, should we decide or need to use volunteers, are we gonna need to come back and revisit an ordinance in order to protect the city from liability?
Well, I think you would have to do that in order to authorize those volunteers to issue citations. Because this actually authorizes them to issue citations on behalf of the city. And so, I would think you, as a city council, would want to authorize that. And of course, if the Police Department is going to offer that program, they'd want to make sure that those volunteers were adequately trained in order to do that. I don't know that we've got that big of a problem with handicap parking spaces around the city. But maybe by amending this and getting rid of it, you'll find out there is a big problem. We need to bring this back.
Hey, Benny?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bruce. Well, currently, most of the citations that are, I'm assuming that most citations that are issued for parking violations are done by Park and Go and the contracting company. Do they also issue ones for violations of the handicap? Are they authorized to do that?
Those would be parking violations. They'd be authorized to issue those, yes.
They're doing most of that work now.
You know, you'd, you'd have to check with the Police Department. I don't know what the percentage is between how many parking citations they issue versus the LPD. My guess would, they are almost all issued by our parking folks.
Thank you.
And that is, as you point out, another significant change from when this was originally offered. And we have that separate parking enforcement. The next one, 17-183, was a suggestion to raise the micro purchase amount from 3,000 to 5,000. And that will, that's another one I'm asking the council to withdraw. I think that the time will be not very far in the future where that would be appropriate. However, Bob Waller with Purchasing tells me that in order to do this uniformly with the city and county, and we do have a city-county purchasing department, there's a state law change that has to take effect. And that if we do it prematurely, then they're, they're using several different standards and there's no uniformity within his department. So, that doesn't seem like the best approach.
Mr. Chair, I move that we eliminate or withdraw item number 44, which is 17-183, correct?
Second. Moved by Cindy, seconded by Carl. Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Taylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
17-184 deletes the provision for the fee that we currently have in the code for the Police Department issuing accident reports. We did that for a number of years. There was a state law change, I want to say about five years ago, an open records law that, as we interpreted, made it illegal for us to charge for accident reports. We thought that it was appropriate for us to be able to charge for accident reports. We took that position with the legislature. They didn't agree. We actually went back one or two years, that's why we didn't immediately delete this, and asked them to think about it again. I think after five years, we're willing to surrender and say, okay, we'll take it out of the code. So, we haven't collected it since it became illegal. We thought it was now appropriate to take it out.
In fact, they're available online for people just to access, correct, for no fee?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, 17-185, I can follow the numbers. That is an amendment to 920-80, which is our panhandling ordinance that replaces some language that prohibits the use of profane or abusive language and replaces that with repeated or persistent attempts at solicitation. I think that's the only change in that one.
So, when, basically, when you decline to give someone what they've asked for, they can swear at you and as long as they move on, it's okay?
Well, we're trying to balance the First Amendment rights of those to folks with the person's right to not be pestered. So, that's a, that's a fair balance, we think.
John?
Cindy was first. Cindy?
So, I did have some calls about this one. Because citizens naturally are concerned with having profane language used as an intimidation tactic. And as I visited with some folks, I indicated that we still have disturbing the peace on our books and so forth. And so, this isn't, we're not actually granting permission for people to verbally abuse others with profane language. And I want to just be, to clarify that, that's not the purpose of this.
Absolutely. And these will be kind of fact-specific, obviously, scenarios. But, you know, the subsection right after that, subsection six, is making statements, gestures, you know, people that feel intimidated to make, that would cause someone to feel intimidated to make a donation. So, you know, just, it really would kind of depend. But that use of language is not necessarily eliminated. It could be a culmination or, you know, multiple things.
And so, and by having the language about the repeated attempts, we're talking about in a single incident, where if an officer observed someone following and repeating approaches and so forth?
That's how I would envision it, yes.
Okay. So, we're not talking about necessarily enhancing, you have, you're ticketed for one, and the second time you do it, you're ticketed at a higher level?
No, ma'am, no.
No, and for example, Carl could be solicited every day as he comes out of his home by the same person. But that would not be a violation. As long as they just ask him once, he goes on his way. That's not repeated because it's not part of the same incident.
Thank you.
Okay. John or Benny?
My understanding is that a panhandler cannot ask. They can only have a sign or something. Am I mistaken on that? You were just referencing Councilman Eskridge being asked for something.
They can ask. Yeah, they can ask.
Well, panhandling is defined as a vocal appeal. But panhandling is not illegal. There are limitations placed on it, but panhandling is legal in the City of Lincoln.
So, for example, homeless individuals sitting on a corner can ask for contributions?
Yes.
For some reason, I thought they couldn't.
Benny?
Thank you, Mr. J. So, I honestly, I think you said this, but I want to go back to it just a bit. Over the weekend, someone asked me for some financial assistance. I said, I'm sorry, I can't help you. And then, they repeatedly said, thanks a lot, thanks for nothing, thanks for something else. And there was some other colorful language in there, and my feelings were hurt a little bit. But unless there was an officer there to witness that, I can't really file a complaint, track the person down.
Well, sure. Nothing's stopping you from calling the service desk and saying-
Saying, my feelings are hurt.
Sometimes that's what-
I was, yeah, I was harassed by a panhandler, yeah.
Sure. I mean, you can call the, the police to make a complaint of that. And the officer would investigate that and determine whether or not they would cite the person after speaking with you and hopefully identifying the person, getting their side of the story.
But only if they've repeatedly asked and I declined and-
Well, just for that subsection, I mean, that's-
Clean-up language, you know.
That, on that subsection, right. There are other things a person could do to get cited. But yes, in that particular scenario.
I mean, if they were intimidating, if it was clear that they were intentionally intimidating you to try to get you to make a, a contribution to them-
Kind of publicly shame me is what he was going to say.
There doesn't, there doesn't have to be a police officer that, that observes. It's just like any other crime or alleged crime. If there's evidence where they can file a report and the prosecutors are comfortable with it, then we're going to file the citation. So, there's nothing magic about having a police officer watch it.
Okay. There was, thank you.
Carl?
Yeah, thanks. And Jeff, there, there's been some litigation about some of these issues in terms of what, what panhandlers can do or what cities can prevent them from doing. Address that a little bit?
Well, I, I would say this is a sensitive issue. And we've seen a lot of litigation all over the country. And different cities have tried different approaches. And, and we've spent a fair amount of time reviewing different cities' approaches just in the last, oh, six months or so. I would say, from the ordinances I've seen, we feel, we fit fairly much in the middle. There are some municipalities that are a lot more stringent than we are. Some of them are going to lose, probably. And then, there are some municipalities that take a much different approach and perhaps a more liberal approach. As you know, being a graduate of very good law school, sometimes what turns out when it's litigated depends upon what circuit it is, federal circuit it is in. And so, there are some things that I would feel comfortable telling the city council, I'm willing to defend that in Nebraska, the Eighth Circuit. Some things that I would not feel comfortable coming to that conclusion in California, for example. But, but this is an evolution, and we're trying to keep an eye on how the litigation is developing. I would remind you that one of the things we came forward last year about this time was charitable contributions. We had a number of problems with those. It did apply to panhandling in the street, but it also applied, I would argue, to all of the campaign contributions that you received that were covered under that very broad ordinance. We got rid of that. We came back this year with these two, I would say, relatively slight changes. It doesn't mean we won't be coming back to you sometime in the future with some other suggestions.
Thank you.
John?
You said that we're kind of in the middle of other cities on our panhandling laws and so forth. Is there, could, could we not add the abusive language or say they can't ask? That they can just sit there with their sign?
I would, I would be reluctant to suggest that we could say that you cannot speak if you're on a public sidewalk. There's a, I'm not sure that the Supreme Court will recognize the difference between asking Councilman Shob for a contribution to buy some coffee and asking Councilman Shob to vote for Donald Trump. I think those are both languages covered in, communication covered in the First Amendment. And so, I think there are some differences in how you can express that communication. But to just say you can't speak on a public sidewalk, I'd be, I couldn't support that. I mean, from the legal standpoint, I think we'd have a lot of difficulty with that.
We've had some abusive panhandlers in the Haymarket area. I mean, they'll chase people down and-
Well, and I think that's one of the reasons why we're coming to you and talking about persistence. Because that is one of those things that's out there. Even if someone is not being intimidating in their language or approach, but they won't go away. That makes people uncomfortable if you're being repeatedly asking. So, we're trying to strike that balance because these sidewalks are public places. And so, the panhandlers are entitled to be there. But, but you and I are also entitled to be there without being, having our, our peace being disturbed unreasonably.
I think we want to remember that, I mean, poverty is not a crime and people have a right to solicit. But what we're trying to, I think, see here is that kind of intimidation tactics or aggressive panhandling that we've all heard about can be addressed through city code. And this is looking to do that.
I'm just not comfortable with taking out abusive language. I just think there's no place for that.
But there are other places in the code that allow for citations if somebody is using abusive language on you, right?
Yes, not, not by definition, but certainly as we talked about, as far as disturbing the peace within the context of what the, what the language is. For example, if I was to mutter something under my breath that you would understand, but I'm just muttering it under my breath, that might be perceived differently or the police officer might react differently, our prosecutors might react differently than if I was screaming it in your face, the same language and a loud tone of voice and, and acting as if I was going to shove you, something like that. I mean, there's a line, and it's going to vary as far as what the contexts are. But to say that, that we're not going to take into account abusive language if we take this out, I think would be misleading.
Okay.
If I may too, I just, I think too, in fairness to the Police Department, we can't be having citizens call them on every little thing. It's, I mean, yes, they're important, but, you know, and by the time an officer might get there, you know, when you talk about calling the central desk or something, the, the situation is evaporated. And I think we need to just understand that with our limited police officers, the importance to really address.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I think you're right. On the other hand, we're talking about the quality of life of, of our community if you do have a situation where you're being threatened. I would assume that could happen to somebody else, same, same street corner perhaps, maybe within the hour or the next day. And so, we do have to address that. And I think what Captain Stilly, who works downtown, or any number of our police officers would say is they want to address that. They want to be called. They want to react to that. And it doesn't necessarily mean they're going to write a citation the first time. But they're going to reach out, talk to those people, make sure they understand you can't threaten other citizens, even if it is in a public place.
So, if they demean my mother by calling me a name, I can get the police?
If you feel like you're threatened, yes.
Okay. Cindy?
Yeah, so, I just have an all-encompassing question. Because I've heard a couple of times, there's a couple of changes that are made in order to extend our jurisdiction, that we would have jurisdiction over several, several things that are already in state jurisdiction. So, at this point in time, when we have an officer that encounters someone and we don't have jurisdiction, what happens?
I guess I don't.
But you had mentioned expanding jurisdiction by adding some language. And I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me.
Let me give you an example and see if this fits.
Okay.
If an officer writes a ticket for running through a red light and also on the same citation says the, the person failed to sign the citation.
Correct.
That goes to our city prosecutor, and what do you do with that?
Um, I could do a couple of different things. I could send the whole thing to the county attorney's office to see if they'll prosecute it. I could separate it and file the traffic violation and send the misdemeanor to the county attorney's office. I could decline the failed, the misdemeanor offense and proceed on the traffic offense.
Okay, so that leads to my second question. With this expanded jurisdiction, is there going to be additional cost to us for prosecuting additional-
Zero.
Charges?
No.
You don't have to pay any cost though?
No.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was hoping that Director Cassidy could come up and just allow us a chance to ask a few questions in general about all these items, since we're taking them together. Thank you.
Tom Cassidy, Director of Public Safety.
Since so many of these are related to the public safety departments. One, one that I had questions about was item 17-165, which is the traffic citation, and asking about whether or not misdemeanor is an appropriate level of penalty for refusing to sign a traffic violation and, or citation. And I was trying to understand from our staff report if that was a change or a continuation of existing practices. Can you speak to that?
Well, as Ms. Kirkoft stated, it's a continuation of our existing practice. It's, what we do is a practical matter now. We're moving that from chapter 10 to, or title 10 to title 9. But it's basically the same wording and a mirror state statute. So, this is how we operate now. Now, I will tell you, it's a practical matter. It's incredibly rare for a police officer to lodge someone in jail for failing to sign a citation. You know, I've been, I've been a police officer for 43 years. I've never done it personally. I've never heard another officer lodging someone in jail only for failing to sign a citation. I'm sure there are people that get lodged in jail, and that is one of the charges. But it would ordinarily only be on a case where someone's already being lodged on, on multiple charges to begin with. I've just never seen it happen. Our policy is not to do that, that if the person doesn't sign the citation, we add a second charge and, and be done with it.
Okay. What do you, what does the Police Department do when you have folks who maybe don't understand because of a language barrier, or they think signing means an admission of guilt? How does the department train or address that kind of a situation?
Well, we use interpreters, obviously. And, and, you know, we have to make someone who's receiving a citation, we have to explain the citation to them. So, if it's a person that doesn't speak English and needs an interpreter, we would arrange for that. There would never be a circumstance where someone who simply didn't have a command of the English language and an officer who, who didn't speak their language would, would cite that person or lodge that person in jail because they didn't understand the citation and could not sign it.
Thank you. And are there any other items you care to share any information about based on?
I would like you to know that we, we issue a lot of tickets to people for aggressive panhandling and illegal panhandling. And also for disturbing the peace and drinking alcohol in public and, and, you know, misdemeanor assault. So, I don't want you to have the feeling that it's a, you know, a free-for-all for, for panhandlers. On the contrary. In fact, sometimes, since some of these ordinances are a little bit difficult to enforce if you don't have a witness who's there and can give you, you know, a good firsthand account of it and is willing to, to come to court and testify if necessary. Sometimes we enforce these ordinances by putting officers in undercover capacity. We've had officers who have gone undercover, masquerading as parking enforcement personnel, public works employees, sanitation crew, downtown Lincoln Association employees for that very purpose, so.
Kind of like us on Halloween last year.
Same thing, same thing, YMCA.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we've covered a lot of ground, items 24 through 46. Is there anyone who'd like to testify on any one of those items? Next item, please.
Wait, wait.
You're coming up. Okay. I'm quick.
I had a feeling.
If I have something to hand out?
Hand it to the clerk, please.
Thank you.
And which items do you, and first introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Spike Eichel. I'm with the ACLU of Nebraska. Address is 721 South 14th Street here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm testifying on items 35 and 46. The two, 35 is the roadway solicitation and 46 is the panhandling ordinance change. You're being distributed a memo that we did send to the city council, I think, last August, along with our suggested proposed revisions to- August, along with our suggested proposed revisions to the panhandling ordinance. Generally, we summer, we support both of these, thank you, both of these changes, never in the ordinances. And you can read why, and I think some of the questions can reflect why we support revising these ordinances. The courts have said that you have a right to ask others for money. You have that right. It is free speech. It is a version of expressive speech, like advocating for a political cause, or even soliciting money on behalf of an organization that goes to give money to people who are homeless and, or people who are in need of money. If you have that right, and the courts have repeatedly said that you do, that does not mean that cities can't regulate that type of conduct and can't regulate that type of behavior, but if cities do so, they need to do so in a narrowly tailored fashion. And generally, as the memo describes, what courts have approved of ordinances that limit aggressive or threatening type of panhandling, for instance, touching somebody else, following someone else, repeated requests after initial, immediate denial and that sort of thing. And ordinances that restrict where a person can ask others for money, for instance, near ATM machines, near bus stops, or near places where the public just can't walk away and just can't get away. We would suggest that perhaps the city look at other revisions to the code, but basically with respect to item thirty-five, one important revision that we would submit needs to be made to make the ordinance constitutional, is narrowing what's meant by right of way. Right now, the City Code defines right of way to include sidewalk and really anything near the street. And we have had, and we've been in contact, and we've actually represented someone who has been cited with simply holding a sign on a public sidewalk. And it's our position that's something the city cannot do. So, I think that that's one reason this council should adopt item thirty-five. Item forty-six does eliminate the abusive profane language, and that is troublesome. And other courts have had problems with it, because no one really knows what that means. What's abusive to one person may not be abusive to other. Frankly, to many people, simply being asked by someone who may look kind of odd, may look kind of homeless, is threatening in and of itself, or abusive can be to somebody else. But unless you have that intent requirement from the person asking the money, that they really mean to threaten or intimidate somebody, it's our position that you cannot prosecute them for that. The reason that we care about this issue is because, as counsel, as Councilperson Gaylord Baird said, it's not a crime to be poor, and what you have is you have a system that sort of criminalizes this problem. Chief Cassidy just, or I don't know his title now, Public Safety Cassidy, whatever his name is, I knew him as chief when I was practicing attorney. He just acknowledged that they write a lot of citations, citations for these. I don't think the police really arrest many people on the spot for panhandling, although I do know of cases where they have. What they typically do is they give them a citation, if someone who's homeless, doesn't have a calendar, doesn't have a reliable mode of transportation, they're going to miss their court date. And then the next time they have contact with the police, they're going to be arrested for failing to appear. They're going to be booked into the jail with, many times, their duffel bag full of personal property. It's going to take the jail a lot of time to book those people in, only to have them sort of sit out their fine because they can't afford to pay it. And what you have is you have, this is one contributing factor to this issue of debtors' prison, where you have a lot of people in the jails who cannot afford to make their bond and cannot afford to pay their fines. And that's a problem that we would like to see addressed, and this is one way to do it. One of the things that you have is a story regarding a client that we had named Janet Bashan. She was prosecuted last year for panhandling. She ultimately pled guilty and paid a small fine because she wanted to move back to her home state, but she explains the experience and how being cited and then arrested for panhandling contributed to sort of the circumstances she found herself in and being homeless, and it is a real problem. We would like to thank the council, individual council people for expressing any interest in this issue. I'd like to thank Mr. Kapatrik and also Jessica Kirkoft. I've been in court with her a number of times on a number of different cases, and I think she's been very fair on this subject, and we urge the committee to, or urge the council to adopt these changes and perhaps look at revising some more.
Thank you very much, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on these items? Next item, please.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions. Item nineteen is the citing approval for the landfill. This was introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl.
And I would like to make a motion to amend number one, which is actually to adopt a substitute resolution with the replacement document entitled Evaluation for Citing Approval, which is attached. Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Cindy. Discussion. Okay, please call the roll on the substitution.
What's motion?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is item twenty, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city for the period of November first through the fifteenth. This was introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Cindy. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-one is a resolution approving the issuance of not to exceed forty million nine hundred eighty-five thousand dollar principal amount of correctional facility refunding bonds, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion. This is a good thing. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance's second reading are items twenty-two through forty-six. Ordinance's third reading, item forty-seven, change of zone one seven zero two-nine, application of par five partners for a change from O-two suburban office, O-three office park, and I-two industrial park to I-three employment center on property generally located at Northwest First and West Fletcher Avenue, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-eight is use permit one seven zero zero seven, application of par five partners for a new I-three use permit with waivers, two setbacks, and sign regulations on property at Northwest First and West Fletcher, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance's second reading are items twenty-two through forty-six. Ordinance's third reading, item forty-seven, change of zone one seven zero two-nine, application of par five partners for a change from O-two suburban office, O-three office park, and I-two industrial park to I-three employment center on property generally located at Northwest First and West Fletcher Avenue, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-eight is use permit one seven zero zero seven, application of par five partners for a new I-three use permit with waivers, two setbacks, and sign regulations on property at Northwest First and West Fletcher, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance's second reading are items twenty-two through forty-six. Ordinance's third reading, item forty-seven, change of zone one seven zero two-nine, application of par five partners for a change from O-two suburban office, O-three office park, and I-two industrial park to I-three employment center on property generally located at Northwest First and West Fletcher Avenue, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-eight is use permit one seven zero zero seven, application of par five partners for a new I-three use permit with waivers, two setbacks, and sign regulations on property at Northwest First and West Fletcher, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-nine, annexation one seven zero one seven. This is annexing approximately one hundred fifty-six acres, generally located between eighty-fourth and one hundred fifth streets, both north and south of O Street, including the entire Hillcrest Heights subdivision and properties immediately west and south of the subdivision, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Cindy?
Yes, thank you. So, we heard a lot of testimony last week, which was kind of similar to Sunrise Estates, but there were some major differences, and one of the things that stuck out in my mind were, especially in my mind, was when one of the homeowners, Mr. Krieger, came forward and highlighted to us and pointed out to us that the three-prong test or guideline that we use, that property be contiguous, urban, and in character, and engulfed by the city, was all a conjunctive, meaning all three should take place.
Excuse me one second, there needs to be a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, and now I'm going to make a motion.
He's, oh.
Yeah, yes.
He's ready to introduce her motion.
Yeah. So, looking at that, I did see some concerns, and I worked with the homeowners, and I'd like to, there's some great ideas that came forward, and so I'd like to make a motion to amend number one, to make a slight change. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, moved by Cindy, seconded by John.
And so, what I'm proposing is, through this amendment, thank you, Councilman, through this amendment, I'm proposing, what we looked at is, there are five areas being considered for annexation here, and I provided a map to all my fellow council members last week on this. There are four of those areas, do, I think, in fact, meet the criteria, but the, what we heard from testimony was areas five and six probably don't. And five in particular was the Hillcrest Homeowners Association, and they, basically, they're, they're only marginally contiguous, they're certainly not engulfed until there is more area surrounding, that's, more development surrounding them. And one of their concerns in particular was what I would label area four, as that development comes forward, we would actually be seeing access to city water and city services be available to them as we, as there was access to A Street. So I think there were some safety concerns I, that I share with them at this point in time. I think it would be extremely responsible of us to go ahead and annex those areas that we didn't hear any, any objection to, areas one through four, five being the Hillcrest area, and six being the lone property that is east of there. And following the same logic of the Planning Commission, when it stated in the report, or, excuse me, the Planning Department at the Planning Commission, it stated, hey, we're not looking at the Hillcrest County Club right now because we're not, at this point in time, there isn't the opportunity to run the city water, it's just not ripe for annexation. I think that's true of the areas five and six, and, and I think that as, also as responsible representatives, we need to look really carefully and consider the, basically how these folks came forward and testified to us and their, the concerns they have, and give them an opportunity, my, what I'm proposing is that when we exclude areas five and six, that that be brought back once there is actually development south of the area and those other areas, and give these folks an opportunity to once again be considered for annexation, to come forward, and I think that we would be showing them great respect and be responsible elected officials if we allowed them to come forward in a, in a position of support. And so, I would offer my motion to amend, and hope that my colleagues will in fact agree with this.
Other discussion. John?
I know that there's been a number of issues on this, and discussion, a lot of the homeowners appeared on testimony, and I, I've got to concur with my colleague, member Cindy Lamb. I think that the others talk, if they did this connecting of all the fire apparatus, for example, to get the water from the hydrant up on O Street, you've got four thousand feet for one individual, it could take eight engines, and that takes the city out of production. And so, to me, it, it's difficult this time to do anything as far as annexation of that, because it's almost impossible to do that without undermining the city, even getting all those fire apparatus there. I think having that area south of them to annex that now, and then the potential of getting a connection to A Street, once that's accomplished, then I think we have a much more feasible way to annex the Hillcrest Heights portion. So, I just think this is common sense, that we just wait and see what happens on the development when the connection is made to A Street, so that we really can provide the type of service without impacting and hurting the rest of the city.
Okay, Jane?
You know, I did have an opportunity to ride my bike there, and then also went into the neighborhood on Hillcrest Heights, and, and I really appreciate what Councilwoman Lamb is trying to do. However, I, I, I think Councilmember Eskridge might be introducing something later, but I can tell you that little section six where you have, it's by Gable Pines, and you feel that it's sort of out of place, actually, it, it really isn't, because if you just look south of Gable Pines, there's that huge parcel of land, and in that huge parcel of land is, is this incredibly brand-new apartment complex under construction at this time, and I, I imagine that it should be, be completed within probably a few, few more months, but, you know, with that little section six, it, it does make perfect sense that that get, gets annexed because of the very, the same development where it'll have access to the road that was constructed for, I believe, the apartment complex. So I would say that that, in your proposal, that I guess items one, two, three, and four would be annexed immediately. I would say that item six should be annexed immediately as well, because it seems appropriate at this time.
Well, first I'd like to hear a response from Cindy.
motion coming up to amend that would put a one-year delay on it till December 4th of 2018. I believe Mr. Eskridge may introduce, or maybe he's been withdrawn or not do that. But I think the real key to this that opens the door to it is when that A Street connection is made so that we can have the adequate opportunity for emergency vehicles to get there. In fact, it's not really the, the fire protection, it's also the medical. And so I, I just think to even put a timetable on it, we need to see what market forces do and when, in fact, there will be development of that area. So Ms. Lamb's, inclusion of that area south is good. Let's see what happens that's in the city and see how far that goes. But this is not analogous to Sunrise Estates. This is, is really a much different area, and I think the timetable needs to be left open at this point.
Carl?
Thank you. I, I appreciate that, John. Eighty-five percent of Lincoln Fire and Rescue's calls are for medical services. And every minute counts. And Lincoln Fire and Rescue can get there a whole lot faster than volunteer responses can, can occur.
I, I'm not going to argue that. I did, well, I wish that we had someone from the fire department here, but we don't see him. My understanding is we are entering into an agreement, a mutually supportive agreement, so that when that call comes into the volunteer fire department, it can be immediately extended to the Lincoln Fire and Rescue.
They've got the best of both worlds.
So, if I might, we actually heard testimony that we already have a mutual agreement where the, right now, rural goes out first and, and then they can call Lincoln LFR if they feel the need to do that. And what we've heard testimony of is that the rural fire department has those $7,000 tankers. They get there, they have water on the ground. And I, I think that it's very presumptuous of us to say that we know better than the residents who have lived there 10 to 17 years, that we can do a better job, or that they're not getting sufficient service from the fire department they're already using. And I don't, I don't want to go there. I think that we don't need to be presumptuous. We, we don't know better than them. They're the folks that live there, and we need to respect their wishes and their comfort level and welcome them into our city willingly. And I think that we're, we're going to be able to do that through, through my motion to amend if we pass that and the underlying motion.
Okay. Jane has a staff question for David Carey.
David Carey with the Lincoln, Lincoln County Planning Department.
You know, I was just really curious by the apartment complex that's going in, in this section right below Gable Pines. Is that, that's already been annexed?
Correct.
Correct? And I just wanted to know how, is there water and how it's being supplied to the apartment complex?
Yeah. And actually, thank you for that opportunity to answer that question because I think it might bring some clarity. The water and sewer actually is available to the Hillcrest Heights neighborhood today. They cannot access it until they are annexed, though. So that's part of what some of the information that we've been trying to share as part of this process is that, that the water and sewer to serve that area is available today. It just cannot be brought into the neighborhood until they're annexed. And then there, and on top of that, would have to be part of an assessment district to do that. But that's the process that would be taken to allow that to happen.
So can you tell me, I know that one of the neighbors had submitted a letter because they went out and got estimates from a plumber to do the connection work. And so how is that typically handled for folks that want to connect with, with city water once they're annexed? They don't have to, right? They don't have to connect?
There are, there are some instances where if you are within a tappable line within 300 feet, and there are some lots within this annexation package that we brought forward, the eight different areas that had some of those lots, that would be required to ultimately annex if they're within a certain distance.
Those are the ones, the properties that are probably on the north side?
Well, in that case, it's really, and I'm going to lean on our public works department to make sure I'm not missmaking here. But the, I guess the reality is that the majority of the lots in the neighborhood would not be compelled to hook up to city water and sewer. However, what would happen is that they would request a, an assessment district to install those lines throughout the neighborhood, and then they would, they would be assessed a charge. The good news on that part is that they would be able to pay for that over a longer period of time. It'd be kind of like getting a loan for that and then paying it off in increments over, I think, a 20-year period.
Is it a 20-year period that the, the neighbors can pay it off?
Bob Simmering, Public Works. Just to clarify, those are, within 300 feet of the sewer are required to hook up.
It's the sewer.
Water, they do not have to hook up at any time. And I guess they would if their wells are found to be contaminated. The assessment districts for water and sewer are, can extend up to a 20-year period.
If the, I guess the potential new customer so requests, or is it automatic that they, can they pay it upfront? Or I'm just trying?
They may pay it upfront, yes.
And, or have an option to make payments over a 20-year period of time?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there not an interest factor if they pay it over the installment for 20 years?
Yes.
Was that 5%?
I'm not exactly sure what it is, but I think it's about that.
The current rate is a little over 5% at this point.
Cindy?
I think that the councilwoman may be a little confused between this and the Portia. We actually heard testimony last week for the Portia annexation, isn't that right? About being forced to hook up for city sewer?
Yeah. So there, well, I mean, the topic applies to all the areas for annexations, but
Right.
It was brought up for the Portia Lane area.
There, there aren't any properties here that would be forced to hook up to city in the Hillcrest addition.
There are properties on the north end. I believe there are eight properties that would be required to hook up to the sanitary sewer.
That, and just for clarification for everybody, that's because the sanitary sewer is already installed along the streets that front those lots. They already have, in other words, they would not have to pay for that actual installment. They would only be paying for the hookup to this, to the sanitary sewer.
And that's why I brought it up, because of the, the development of the large apartment building there. Because I'm, I'm guessing that that's probably the, the entity that brought in the, the sewer. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lyrian?
I guess I would just add that I, I also think that it's insightful that Cindy brought forward a plan that would kind of dive, divide out items one through four, the parcels one through four, from five and six. So I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll just say that where I diverge is that consistency matters and predictability matters for residents and for city planning and for getting infrastructure to new areas of the city, and that I'd be more comfortable with an arrangement where we do delay the annexation of parcels five and six, the areas where Hillcrest Heights is and the house north of the, the club, rather than having an indefinite sort of ambiguity to it, that if we delay it for a year, we provide consistency with how we've treated other residents of our community. And we also provide a good length of time for parents to prepare for school district choices and for them to make decisions about whether or not they want to do assessment districts or not. To me, that, that predictability is important. It's, it's important for developers, it's important for residents, it's important for the city. So while I won't be supporting Cindy's motion, I, I do want to act on part of what she's brought forward.
Okay. Any other comments before we, I call a roll? John?
And I appreciate what Councilmember Gaylor Baird said. Talking about consistency, you know, this all started with Planning Commission. And I think you said at one point, Mr. Carey, you had 17 or 18 considered, considered annexes, annexations, and you decided to whittle, whittle it down to seven or eight this year. But it really came from staff. And I think then to say, well, now we've got to be consistent with what staff said. We're here to use our review of this and common sense and fiscal responsibility and looking at the nature of the neighborhoods. And I think this is just one that it's not even ripe to give it a one-year delay. And I think it's important that this can come back at another time. But for the time being, I appreciate what Councilmember Lamb has said.
Just to clarify, I meant consistency with our own previous decision-making policy with Sunrise Estates, not necessarily with staff, because we diverge from staff's recommendation in that case. And I think we could diverge in this case. But I'd like to be trying to do that in an equitable manner. And I can agree to disagree about what that looks like.
This has different factors to it, I guess, as I look at it.
Okay. Let's call the roll on Cindy's amendment to divide up the annexation. So, is everybody clear what we're voting on?
No.
Motion to amend, number one.
Okay. Now, do you want a further explanation, Benny?
I think for clarity it would be.
For clarity, please repeat what we're actually voting on in the amendment.
Sure.
What will we annex and what will we not?
Will be annexing what I referred to in the map I provided as areas one through four, which are to the north, to the west, and to the south of Hillcrest. And we will be excluding areas five and six.
Okay. Is that clear? Benny?
On the map that you provided, the sections that are crossed out are the sections that's been excluded. Is that fair to say?
Yes. Do you have the map that has the numbering?
No.
Okay. Let me, let me pass this one down. This is the map that has the numbering. One through four would be annexed under Cindy's proposal, and five and six would not.
Thank you for hearing this, yes.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ray Bold?
No.
Sho?
No.
Motion lost three to four.
Mr. Chair? Phil? Would like to propose motion to amend, number two.
Motion to amend, number two. And it consists of?
All right. Essentially, what this does is, is repeats what we did with Sunrise Estates. It delays implementation of the annexation for one year.
Okay, until December?
December 4th, 2018.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Just to clarify, is that just for the parcel six or the areas five and six?
That's correct.
But annex is immediately the one through four as Cindy had proposed?
That's correct.
Can you verify, can you verify that that's what this says?
I missed the second.
Yes, I can verify that.
Okay.
Just to clarify, so Carl's motion is to annex one?
Through four.
Through four. And five and six will be delayed one year.
Correct.
Yes. The, the effective action is, if this is approved, the annexation would apply to all the areas, but on five and six, it would not be implemented for annexation until December 4th of 2018.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yeah. So essentially, one through four agrees with Cindy and what, what her motion suggested. And the quest, the differences on five and six. And, and these are areas that need to come into the city. They, they meet the criteria. Was, was recently flying in to our city. And so the 10,000-foot view at night is interesting because, you know, I've, I've heard people say that have been in Lincoln a long time that they remember when South 56th Street was a gravel road, you know, and, and the city ended there. And, and that was maybe 50 years ago. And so now, you know, you look at the chunks that have happened, you know, from 56th to 70th, from 70th to 84th. Well, flying in, you see, you know, it's, it's, right now, the lights are just starting to move. You can almost see them moving from 84th Street to the east. And this, this is part of that development that's occurring south of, south of Hillcrest and, and the area on A Street, going to the north from A Street. That area's being graded, you know. It's, it's in the works for development now. They've come to us for, for early approval of it. So this is going to happen. The area is going to be developed all around there. In fact, as we saw on our, in our last hearing, much, much, much farther to the east, it'll be developing.
Okay. John?
I appreciate Mr. Eskridge's comments. I, again, I just reinforce what I've said before. I, this puts a, a time on it, and I think that's the element that needs not to be there. Because we need to see as the market gets there and conditions are there, that the city can adequately and affordably provide these services. Ultimately, I think the residents understand too that they will be annexed, but this is not the time, nor is a year from now the time. We need to see how conditions are.
Okay. Jane has a staff question for Mr. Carey.
David?
Did we get a second?
That was my question. Who seconded that motion?
Oh, let's have a second. Have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Lyrian, moved by Carl, seconded by Lyrian.
So David, going back to that little chunk six, since it's delayed annexation, but the sewer is there already, they're under no obligation to, to connect to the sewer line, correct?
Another good question. That single property actually is a unique one because the sewer line that is, is in proximity, within that 300-foot number, actually is not yet, for that lot is not yet tappable, and therefore that does not apply. It could be with some additional improvements if the, the owner of that lot wanted to move forward with that. But of course, they would also have to move forward with more immediate annexation to get that project going. But that is the situation with that one particular lot.
So wait, so make sure I understand that. If they wanted to, they could right now, with or without being annexed?
No.
No, they have to be annexed. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Comment? Benny?
I appreciate all the testimony and last meeting from the residents. I am a little concerned that we keep making exceptions. And we have an issue, in the past, we've talked about issues with the liquor commission. We made exceptions and exceptions and exceptions. And we finally found ourselves in a position where we had to change the rules to clean it up because the exceptions were becoming the rule. And I'm worried a little that if we keep making exceptions for annexation, we'll end up in the same situation where we'll annex you now with this condition, or we won't annex you until later. I would like us to try to move back towards some level of consistency where we are being very predictable and we can give the residents something they can count on. I think this motion moves in that direction.
Jane?
Again, I'm going to support this motion because I, I like the fact that we heard a lot of great testimony from the folks that this will impact. And I've reached out to one or two to, to get their take on the possibility of a delay. I think it's reasonable to be consistent as we've treated Sunrise Estates as, as well as Hillcrest. I do see development coming here sooner rather than later. And I know that there's a lot of interest in this area because it's a beautiful area. I, it's a lovely neighborhood. And so I certainly hope that getting a delay of one year will, will help the neighbors get any, any issues or elements or concerns they have taken care of. I know that it was a jolt to, to think that you weren't going to be annexed, particularly for those that have children in the Waverly school system. So hopefully, it will allow the Waverly school system to plan better, to accommodate the, the children from Lincoln, that they will now be, or the children that are in that neighborhood that will now be going to Lincoln Public Schools and, and Waverly will have to make that offset. So I think it's, it's a good plan, a delay of one year. I'd like to be consistent with the other, other folks in the other neighborhoods that have raised concerns.
Okay. Cindy?
Thank you. I appreciate Councilman Schob's comments because really, at the base of this whole, what we've seen in these delays has been a lack of consistency. Because we involuntarily, we decided to do an involuntary annexation, which is not consistent with what we've done in the past. Generally, someone is asking for the annexation. And so we began with an inconsistency. Also, the folk, as folks have testified from both Sunrise and from Hillcrest, they believed that annexation was going to take place. And we're getting a consistent opinion that it was going to take place further away. And so then for that to be presented to them right away, it gave rise to many of the concerns we saw, and rightly so. I was especially disturbed by the Waverly superintendent coming forward and saying, hey, we didn't even, we weren't even brought into it until someone that was in the, in the Homeowner Association brought it to our attention in September. It's, it's not consistent, and nor should it be consistent for us to rush into involuntary, what I would call forced annexations. And I am, I gotta tell you, I have a couple concerns about the motion to amend, number two. One is that I made the council, all my colleagues, I made it known to my colleagues what I was proposing last week. The first time that I saw motion to amend, number two, or understood that anyone wanted to bring something differently was when I got here today. And so I, I am concerned about that because I have heard some criticism in the past that, hey, I wasn't there, I haven't been getting to folks soon enough, those things that I would like to see amended. And I made sure to do that as I've been trying to do consistently, and the same courtesy was not extended to me. And so that's disappointing to me. And it, and I, I think it shows, you know, a, a lack of reciprocity, let's call it. But also, more importantly, I think, I'm going to support this because obviously, I don't agree we should annex five and six right now, but I do believe waiting a year to have it trigger is better than going forward with an annexation. I think that we are showing, by doing this, we are showing a great disrespect for these people. This is not the same situation. We have to consistently look at each situation on the facts of that situation. That should be where we're consistent. Not that we're consistently delaying something because certain things exist, but because we look at the facts. This is only marginally contiguous. It is certainly not engulfed at this time. I would say that it does not meet the ripeness test that's being, that was being touted by I would say that it does not meet the ripeness test that's being, that was being touted by the planning department at the Planning Commission. And by telling these people that we know better than they do and that we are going to give them time to get used to the idea is us going in and basically going through the motions. We've said, hey, we want to annex this. And we're going to have public meetings, just so we can say we had public meetings. But what you've said doesn't really matter. I think that they deserve the respect and the consideration to be able to come back after we've seen development and be able to come back fully supportive of this annexation, which they've indicated they'd be willing to do once those items are, their concerns are cured. By doing it this way, we're not allowing them that voice at all. We're saying, we're going to do it now, despite all the objections that we've seen. And then, but we're just going to delay it till December 4th in 2018. And when that happens, you're annexed no matter what. You don't have a voice in that at all. And I think that we are elected as representatives of the people. We work to help the people be governed by their, by the city. But we are not represented to, we're not elected to go forward and just do forced annexations and make people believe they have no voice in what's happening.
I'll take comments from Lyrian, or John, then Lyrian.
I'm wondering if Mr. Eskridge would accept a friendly amendment and instead of saying December 4th, 2018, say when A Street is connected to Hillcrest Heights.
Okay.
That could be sooner.
But that makes sense. Yeah, that could be sooner.
Well, I just want to say that I think as elected officials, we all work to respect the voices of citizens, residents, and in this case, people who aren't yet residents of Lincoln. We take this really seriously. And if we weren't taking this on a case-by-case basis, we would have delayed every annexation that's been brought forward, city-initiated for a year. We haven't done that. We've looked at these on a case-by-case basis and listened to concerns and tried to address them fairly. And that's what we're doing here. And I think that we heard in the public hearing a lot of concerns. We also heard that the neighborhood wasn't ultimately opposed to annexation, but that they opposed the timing. And I think that this proposal does try to respect that request for a delay in the effective date of annexation. And I just think it's important to be clear about that.
Okay. I'm going to call the roll now. Please call the roll.
Cam?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to two.
Now, we're going to do the main motion. Are there any comments on the main motion that we haven't already made? John, and then Cindy.
I'm going to oppose the main motion because it does include Hillcrest Heights. And I hope you all know too, I have a somewhat interest in getting them annexed because I get more voters in my district, because that would be. But being that said, I would still help them if they had a city question since they're within the three-mile limit. But I think it's a big mistake on adding that Hillcrest.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
By the way, I'm going to try to limit this to one comment per person before you vote.
Okay. So encompass it all, right?
Yep.
So the last statement that was made about the homeowners that we addressed our concerns, we showed them respect. I see a number of the homeowners here tonight, and I just wonder if a show of hands would actually validate the claim that we have respected, truly respected their concerns by not allowing them an opportunity to come forward in full support at the time of the annexation.
So what you're asking me to do is to ask the people to raise their hand if they feel like they've been respected?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. If you feel like, if you're in the audience tonight and you feel like your wishes and desires have been respected to this point by the council, please raise your hand. Let it be noted that no one raised their hand. Okay, keep going, Cindy.
Thank you. So that said, I think that speaks a great deal to when we think we know better than the folks who come and testify before us. And I am not going to support the underlying annexation for the reasons that have come forward before. And I am disappointed that we proceeded this way. I expect that the next item for us for annexation, we'll also see a motion from Councilwoman Lyrian Baird to delay that annex, but delay trigger for a year in order to be consistent. I don't know if that's going to happen.
No, it's not going to happen.
Okay. So that's just kind of where I'm at right now. And thank you for asking that question, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Carl?
Thank you. Again, the two main issues are safety and fairness. It's important to the neighborhood that you have full representation as quick as possible to fire and medical protection. And annexation as soon as possible will be helpful in that regard. The second thing is, you know, treating this neighborhood the same as we've treated another neighborhood that's very similar to me is important. For that reason, I'm supporting this.
Okay. Jane?
I just want to say thank you to all the folks that came out tonight and let you know that we heard you and we respect your comments. And we are trying to be fair to both of the areas that were under consideration for annexation and to treat you both the same way, fairly and consistently. And I don't, I respect your concerns about annexation, but I think in all fairness, this is the right direction to go. And certainly, I am grateful for you all taking time out to come here and be with us this evening.
Lyrian? Benny?
No.
I will then conclude with my remarks and then call for the roll. In the testimony we heard in a previous council meeting, I have been persuaded by the arguments, two arguments made by the homeowners in Hillcrest Heights. The first argument is that the same logic that the city used to not annex Hillcrest Golf Course applies completely to Hillcrest Heights. That's number one. So if we're not going to annex the golf course for the reasons given to us, I don't think we should annex Hillcrest Heights for the same reasons. The other reason is there's not an opposition to this as long as they're connected from A Street with streets and services. That's pretty clear. I think that message was heard loud and clear to me. And so I will not support this. Please call the roll.
Cam?
No.
Christensen?
No.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to three. Next is item 50, annexation 17018, annexing approximately 68 acres of property generally located between 75th and 84th Streets and between Highway 2 and Yankee Hill Road. Said properties lying adjacent to a portion of Porty Lane, Dunroven Road, and Allymark Lane, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion?
I have a motion to amend.
Lyrian?
So we heard in the testimony last week some concern about fire protection. And in this particular case, there is a city water line that runs along Porty Lane. And we, as a council, have the ability to order in a fire hydrant, an installation to allow for quicker access than might otherwise be provided by the development that is expected to the south. The cost is $7,000. Public Works has said this can be done. And I'd like to respectfully request that the council consider ordering in a fire hydrant for this community as a part of this annexation.
You have a second?
Seconds.
Moved by Lyrian, seconded by Jane. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Now on the main motion. Is there any discussion? Cindy?
I'd just like to say that I am disappointed that no one's making a motion to hold this off for a year. These folks had the same exact concerns as the other two areas. And we've been hearing about consistency, and that appears to not be present. But I am going to consistently vote no because I think that the safety concerns, the rural fire concerns, and us believing that we know best for these folks is not appropriate at this point in time.
Just want to add that, you know, we have been treating the different annexation packages and proposals differently. And in this case, I'm sorry.
Not appropriate, Cindy.
On a case-by-case basis, as you mentioned, and that it isn't necessarily logical to treat this one the same in the sense that one of the big concerns I think we've heard about is school district changes. And in this case, these residents are already a part of LPS. So they don't have the same sort of issues related to making determinations about where children go to school. And they do already have the water line, which is why we're able to address a fire safety concern more immediately for them.
Any other discussion? And this is now on the main motion. Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Resolutions on first reading are items 51 through 57. Ordinances on first reading are items 58 through 61. As I noted earlier, on item 59, we did have a request to delay introduction to December 11th. If someone would move that.
That was, so moved.
Seconds.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Are pending lists date certain? Are items 62 through 66? Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time, since it is an open microphone session.
Mr. Chair, seeing nobody galloping forward, I would move for adjournment.
Seconds.
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We're adjourned.